I'm going to call a meeting to order. I know Dave's here. He must be outside the door. He's right, Pledge of Allegiance. It's Rika, you're next up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for just a moment. The last time this board met was a few days before the passing of Chief Darren Spalding. I'd like to take a moment of silence for Chief Spalding, please. Thank you. Godspeed, Darren. Welcome to the Weathersfield Select Board Meeting. Today is Monday, April 22nd. Agenda review, is the agenda look like it's all in order for everyone tonight? Any additions or corrections to the agenda? You're all set? Hearing done? Comments from Select Board Town Managers, Citizens, Topics not on the agenda? Anybody on the board? Anybody from the audience? Mr. Harrison?
I'll give a quick report. Three weeks till adjournment. Yay!
Yay!
For you!
There's still a lot of work. There's a lot of bills that... All the money bills originate in the House. They went over to the Senate. The Senate is finishing up with them. They'll come back to us with changes and then you hash it out if anything comes in. The bills absolutely have to be passed, the Transportation Bill, they call the big bill, which is everything else, and the Capital Bill, which is the borrowing bill. All three of those have to make it out before we adjourn. A couple other bills of interest. There was a bill that made its way earlier. I've talked to Brandon quite a bit about it that would have significantly impacted our abatement of taxes and tax sales. I was really concerned the way the original wordage, it got watered down some in the House. It got watered down a whole bunch more in the Senate. And now the wordage is... There's a lot more reporting to do to the people that are having their house seized, the property being seized, but I think that's appropriate. But the biggest concern was that they were going to lower the interest rate to prospective bidders and to the point where I don't think anybody would have bid and that's who would have been the bidder, the county. And so it's back up to a traditional level. So I think we're going to be okay with the wordage like it is. Another bill that actually we're finishing up tomorrow, everybody know what a ghost gun is?
Mm-hmm.
It's one that you make. They're not going to be illegal to make, but if you make one out of parts, out of plastic, whatever you do, it will be illegal to own it unless you take it to a gunsmith, have its serial number stamped on it and the serial number registered with the feds so it's in a database. I have no problem at all with that. Another component of that same bill is, I'm not real fond when they mix stuff that really don't have a lot to do with each other. It's prohibiting hunting coyotes with dogs. I guess I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. If anybody does, let me know soon. Those are the big ones that are coming up. Once again, in the next few weeks, there'll be a lot going on. Please reach out.
Thank you. A bad one on me. Everybody sees the lectern over here. Please, if you want to, at any point when you're speaking or addressing the board, come up to the lectern. I should have told you that before you spoke. And it's mainly because people online have a hard time hearing from the audience. They can hear us because we've got microphones up here, but the audience is far enough away that it kind of gets lost for them.
Is my microphone okay or not?
What's... I'm sorry?
Is my mic okay or not?
I think you're okay.
Okay.
And if you just tell us, you know, your name and so forth, so we know who you are, that's helpful.
That's the point. Representative John Harrison.
I know you.
Why did you ask?
Any other comments from Citizens? Topics not on the agenda. Dave?
I have a question for John. If nothing's going to change on that tax collection bill, then what are they taking it up for at all?
Well...
That's okay. I mean...
The original part of the bill was brought forth mostly by ACLU. There was a tax sale someplace in the western part of the state where the person lost their house for like $6,500. And they didn't feel that the due process was adequate. So that's the reason they... But what they... They really toned it to a point where it was going to be two years before you could even start a tax sale. It was going to have to be $20,000 worth of arrears before you could start a tax sale. I mean, that's ridiculous. You get some onlanded mobile home, you'd never reach that threshold. You'd never be able to put it up for tax sale. So all that stuff has been ratcheted back to just about the same level. I think people realized that through testimony and especially the Senate, the Senate really took care of several of the problems with it. And, you know, they took the interest rate that you would be paid down to 6%. I don't feel that anybody would bid. But what's still in the bill is a panel to look at several issues and report back next year. So it'd be a good idea to keep an eye on it. BLCT was very vocal in opposition of the bill and they were in... Every time there was testimony, they were in and looking after the town's interests. Good enough?
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, John. Review minutes, previous meeting, 4:824. Do I hear a motion to approve minutes of 4:824?
I move to approve the minutes of 4:824.
Do I hear a second?
No second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the minutes of 4:824. Any corrections? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes, 4:824, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? A motion to approve the minutes of 4:1224?
I move we approve the minutes of 4:1224.
No second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I vote aye. The minutes carry. Public hearing, Article 2, zoning districts and district standards and Article 7 definitions. I don't see our administrator.
He's online.
Ah, there he is. Very good. I will turn it over to you, Ryan.
Sure. So we were here last month talking about this private airstrip and helipad bylaw. It's a new use that's going to be applied to all the different tables for each district. And the use itself is a prohibiting use in all districts. So this, just a little bit of background, it came from a letter that was sent around in 2021 from the State Transportation Board explaining some issues that have happened where their regulatory process requires the town's involvement to some degree, a review of a project that they're going to add a private helipad or airstrip to their property. But most towns don't have a regulatory mechanism to review those projects with, whether that's zoning or another ordinance or something else. So this is the Planning Commission's choice for addressing that use. And so at the last meeting, we had some discussion about the definition of private airstrip or helipad. And so the, I guess, the question that some people had raised was, does that include hot air balloons and drones and ultralight planes, different types of private personal aircraft? And so per that discussion, we went back to the Planning Commission and changed the definition a little bit to include, I guess, to specify that the type of aircraft that this applies to is something that has a FAA N-number registration. So basically, and I think this part came out of John Harrison's comments, but I think that applies to aircraft over 500 pounds. And then for further clarity, we added excluding drones and hot air balloons. So those don't apply.
Any questions?
So is an ultralight, is he considering an ultralight a drone?
No, I think the word ultralight, I'm really not familiar with the different terms, but I think that's like a small personal aircraft that someone flies. And there's probably different sizes of it. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the 500 pound number is if your aircraft's over that, it needs to be registered to the FAA and given an N-number.
Right. It wouldn't have an N... Unless it's over 500 pounds, it wouldn't have an N-number.
Right. But he just says excluding drones and...
But go back before that and it says the takeoff and landing of any FAA N-numbered registered vehicle.
Yeah.
So if it's not an N... So if it's not... Huh?
Excluding drones and hair.
That's a separate phrase.
So regarding ultralights, there might be some that are allowed. There might be some that are larger than that, that would not be allowed. But we didn't want to call out the ultralights specifically like we wanted to with the drones and hot air balloons.
Okay.
Because they're just the noise and the intensity of their uses is different.
Any questions? Dave?
I see a problem with the definition of what a private airstrip was because when we were here before, John had mentioned that perhaps someone would build something so they could take off or land with their, whatever unit you'd like to call. So clearly, there would need to be a definition of what that is.
The development or use of any land for the purpose of takeoff or landing of any N-numbered registered aircraft is not allowed.
But if you look at, it's continually going here, use is not permitted. They're all going through all of these things. It says the last yellow highlighted thing is private airstrip or helipad.
Yes.
Every single one of them.
That's not the definition. That is actually the tables.
Okay.
It's all the way to the back. If you go down at the end, it says definition, Article 7, at the conclusion of this.
So you're saying the definition is there where ultralights can build their own if they want to on their land, whatever that it might be. Somebody might want to put pavement down. I don't know. I don't know.
No, they can't. Well, actually, if it's non-registered, yes, they can.
Okay. That's what I want to clarify because when I was scrolling down through here, it would say private airstrip, private airstrip, private airstrip. And then you're telling me that a definition at... Okay, at the very end. Well, but I agree with Kelly when she said, I think you need to put the... I don't know why you don't want to put the word other... Because with time, how do you know that you're... It seems like you're only restricting drones or hot air balloons.
You're excluding them.
Yeah. So, but that's where I'm going. Because suppose with technology, somebody has some other device or whatever, but you've picked out those two words, a balloon or a drone, but some other device that could be used that goes underneath the 500 pound or whatever it is threshold. My point is, why are those in there? Why don't you take all that parentheses out and then leave it alone with unregistered? Because is the FAA registered drones or hot air balloons?
No, not that I know of. Or it's different.
Hot air balloons at least, they might if it's over 500 pounds. And so those two uses we called out because we know they exist. And if there are future uses or future technology that fits kind of in that same category, then it's a method we can add if it becomes a problem. Or we recognize an opportunity to solve something before it's...
I'm in favor of clearing this up before it hits the third reading so that it can be...
This doesn't hit a third reading. This is not an ordinance. This is a zoning bylaw.
But we're in a hearing.
That's correct. We're in a hearing.
So doesn't it take three hearings and then the third one approves?
No.
What does it do?
Ryan, can you explain that to him?
So there needs to be one or more hearings. So this is the first. It's been continued once. It's still the same hearing. The board has the option to accept it as is. They could say if we want minor changes, that don't change the intent of the language and the Planning Commission, like what happened before, can take it up and make changes or it can be denied. But there doesn't need to be another hearing ordered and everything. So this is a continuation of the first hearing.
What is the... And I didn't think of this earlier until you said that there might be a hot air balloon that's more than 500 pounds because I... It seems like a lot... What's the likelihood that we run into problems with drones becoming large, right? Like, I think of drones as these small things. But the last thing I think I'd get really excited about is somebody flying, you know, 700 pound drone over my house because that was legal. And maybe, I don't know if they make them that big. I don't know anything. But if we're not... If the 500 is the limit, why do we have drones in here, right? Because over 500, somebody remotely operating one over your house might not feel that comfortable.
Ryan?
So I think the reason was just because drones, I guess, they serve a different purpose and they don't have the same nuisance level. So if you're going to have a 500 pound drone, it probably would be obnoxious, but it's not going to be as disruptive as a helicopter. And maybe if we find that becomes a problem, then we can take that out and change it. But I think the idea was that a remote control object is just kind of a different category. And we didn't want to accidentally prevent someone from using a drone, especially one that's not the same level as airplanes and helicopters. So it was discussed about very large drones. But I guess this is the language that they settled on. So it was part of the discussion. And like all things, if it's something that needs to be changed, it's true.
Mr. Fuller, do you have a proposed amendment to change the language of the definition?
I still get back to the meeting that triggered this whole thing, which it wasn't really talking about drones or hot air balloons, that it was focused on the... What do you call those? Ultralights, John?
Ultralights.
So I would... I do agree with Nate because technology changes rapidly. And I saw somebody with a drone that's got four big propellers on it. And that, you know, depends on your definition of obnoxious. I don't know that it's going to reach 500 pounds, but they make a lot of noise and they... I don't know what they're going to carry in the future.
Are you aware of that technology currently in production?
No.
Okay. Then wouldn't it be wise to go ahead or perhaps be wise to go ahead? And if that starts to happen, then amendment would be appropriate for the definition? Yes?
Yeah, but here's what would happen. I mean, if somebody did that, then they could say, wait a minute, I'm grandfathered. I got my thing in now and tough, you can't stop me. So I think so. I don't know. I just, these are the two new words that came up here that I saw at the very end here of the definition. Before, when I was scrolling down, it said...
The thing I've learned in my years of writing zoning bylaws is you can write zoning bylaws. You could spend months and months on writing those zoning bylaws. And if people are not sitting in the Planning Commission, participating in the discussion about those bylaws, Mr. Cherish, you can relate to this. You were there for a while. You never can predict every single thing that's going to happen. You try to do the best you can. This came out of a kind of a heads up from the state that they started to see some of these helipads popping up and towns started saying, I'm not sure we want this.
Interesting because I thought I would alert. I represent Cavendish also. I thought I'd alert them. Turns out, they've had an ordinance. They don't have zoning, so they had to do it through an ordinance since 2013 because somebody built a helipad in their town. Now they have one helipad and now they have an ordinance that they know more, like no runway.
So the...
I don't know exactly how they worded it.
So the focus, you know, kind of from the alarm, if you will, was that be careful. We're seeing a lot of... I don't want to put a finger on anybody. Perhaps they're transients that are moving in from down country, whatever, buying houses up here. They got lots of money and they got a helicopter and they're putting in whatever. It seemed like that was what they were trying to caution us against. And the Planning Commission thought it prudent to go ahead and address that. We came here and learned from you, John, that it kind of, the way we wrote it says a few other things.
And Cavendish tried to prohibit, told them they couldn't have the helipad, but they had nothing on books and so they couldn't prohibit it. That's kind of starting the ball wrong.
And that speaks to what Dave's talking about as far as the grandfather rule. But the point is, we're ahead of something here in the beginning for our town to start with. So what's the board's...
I think we can move forward with this if we can come together by... I believe that adding some words in here that would also address the ultralight, specifically the words, that would be a friendly amendment. And it doesn't have to go back to the... I don't think we're... I agree. I agree with the concept in general. And then if we develop those right now and just add those words in there, whatever the definition of the ultralight is, and add it to the definition, Article 7, then we could close this hearing and adopt it, the bylaw. Because I think that's a... I think, would you agree that that's a minor add?
Ryan, I'll defer to you on that.
Well, so I guess my question is, are you trying to add that to the list of exclusions? So ultralights wouldn't be something that are regulated?
No, not regulated, but up to a certain weight limit to include it in that name along with drones and hot air balloons.
Well, you could do that under the...
So those two listed items are things that are excluded from this regulation. So if we're going to add ultralights, then ultralights would be something that's excluded. And so I guess the purpose, the main intent was to regulate both size helicopters and airplanes. And then you get into this nuance when you get into smaller types of aircraft. And so we knew that hot air balloons were something that we said, that's something we're not, that's not the intent. They don't make the noise like them. When it comes to drones, it's a little bit more tricky, but I think we're still at a point where if someone is using their property to, for takeoff of large drones, it's still probably not registering that high on the decibel meter. It's probably annoying and obnoxious like a lot of other things are. But I don't think it's the same, it's not the intent of this bylaw. It's to try and reduce the intensity of large aircraft. So that's, when we get into the nuance of the ultralights, that's something that's even a little bit more difficult for us than that. And in the discussion that the Planning Commission had about this, this is where they landed. They discussed ultralights and whatever the other type of fan powered little aircraft are. So without knowing that much of that though, it sounds like there might be small ones that might be excluded from this, for example, from the prohibition. But if there are ultralights that are larger than 500 pounds and require FAA N-number, then it wouldn't be allowed to take off.
Brandon?
Do drones and hot air balloons and ultralights require an FFA numbered registration?
Ryan?
From our understanding, it's based entirely on the weight of the aircraft. So if it was over 500 pounds, then it would...
23 applies over 500 pounds.
Would require the FAA reg... John, does that sound consistent with what you know?
I'm sorry.
Anything over 500 pounds requires a...
It's going to have an N-number on it.
Okay. So then a small ultralight is okay and a big one is not okay.
Example, Renee Bergeron up on Golden Ridge used to fly an ultralight out of his field. Under this ordinance, it's still, he'd still be allowed to. Stan Spencer, just up the road, used to land his Supercub in his field. That would not be allowed.
Right. Okay. So where are we at? Mr. Fuller, is that satisfy what you want to see?
Do... So you just mentioned some names. So if people are currently using their property in that vein now, would this ordinance prohibit them from doing so?
I don't know. Well, Stan doesn't live there anymore and I'm not sure if Renee is still flying. I haven't heard him for a long time, so he may have just given it up.
Here's how I think it would apply. You said he was landing it in his field. And although we don't really want that, he'd probably be grandfathered, but he would never be able to go out there and actually lay down a landing strip because this stops the development. If he hadn't already done the development, this would stop the development. Right?
But the whole... The reason that we went back to the Planning Commission, I'm a little confused, but they... The whole reason was to take up ultralight. It wasn't... We didn't mention, at least in the minutes, I don't recall, saying anything about hot air balloons or drones. So that's why I just, I think we would have adopted it then. And then John came in and said, wait a minute, you know, the ultralights are kind of nice. And he added that some people like to have a little bit better pad to go off. So it might not be a grassy field. We're not.
I called Mr. Harrison during the Planning Commission meeting to run the language by him and he felt that that covered the...
That we're looking at now?
Yes.
So the FAA N-number language, that line required, anything that's requiring an FAA N-number, that's how the Planning Commission dealt with the ultralight question. It's not, it's not... There's a range of sizes of ultralights, so you can't just, or I don't think the board wanted to prohibit all ultralights or allow all ultralights.
Correct.
So they drew the line with the FAA N-number. Something that's a little bit more...
Correct. And one more thing, Dave. We added development along with use, which, moving forward, would change Stan's thing if he was landing in his field. You wouldn't be able to do that. If it's an FAA N-numbered plane, you wouldn't be able to land it in the field anymore.
The field, no improvement in the field. It's just the field.
But it says use. It says development and use. So he wouldn't be able to use it that way either. Or, so he wouldn't be able to develop a runway or use it, even the field as a runway for an N-numbered machine. Ray? Thank you. I don't know why you sit on that side.
Just for clarity, hot air balloons do require an N-number? With the FFA, I just checked it online.
Okay. Thank you.
On the website for them. So that's probably why they're in here saying you don't have to have... It's excluded because it does require an N-number.
Thank you. You all set?
So I'm by that. Okay. So I'll take whatever the language is on that. So does this language here prohibit somebody from putting asphalt down to... to land their 499 pound ultralight? Okay.
Ultralight?
Yeah.
Their 499 pound ultralight?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
It would not.
Is that not included under development? Is that...
Yeah, but the plane that they're putting it down for is under the, under the regulation.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay.
And anything on its own doesn't require a zoning permit, it's not included in the definition of development?
Okay.
Is this a hearing then? So it's a hearing on, yeah, but technically, just the name of this is a public hearing on, what is it, Article II zoning districts and district standards for...
Article VII. Helipads. Private airstrips and or helipads.
Yes. So, so going forward, you close the hearing as the chair?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And then we do, and then we do a motion to adopt. Okay. So is there any further discussion on the, the articles from the planning commission concerning the private airstrips and helipads? John, you're good with this? You're good with this? Language, it's okay? And everybody else? All right, I will close the hearing. It is, what time? 7:01. Do I hear a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve Article II zoning districts and district standards and Article VII and...
Definitions.
Definitions of private land, landing strips and helipads.
Private airstrips and helipads?
Yes.
Five or a second to the motion.
Five seconds.
We have a motion, and a second.
Did I say, did I say in my motion that we adopt? Did I say? I think so, right?
Yep. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion, or any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion? The motion is to adopt the zoning bylaws for private airstrips and helipads and the definitions associated with. All in favor of the motion signify the say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abandoned. Any extensions? Motion carries, it's unanimous.
So that's not an interim bylaw, right? That's a permanent?
That is a permanent bylaw.
Okay, good. So it's not going to be reviewed in a year, it's all done?
That's, it can be reviewed anytime, and in the instance, I'm glad you brought that up, in the instance, if something did pop up, you could immediately go into an interim bylaw to correct it. You wouldn't have to go through the longstanding process, you can use the interim, which is very quick.
Isn't that like 12 months? There's a time on that.
There is, but it's a short period, it's a different hearing process to get it adopted. It's so that you can, if you have a problem, you can fix it quick. That's, that's something that's built into 24117 municipal zoning bylaws, which is state statute stuff, so. So there is a way to fix something if it's not working or if there's a problem. Okay? So, next, draft local hazard mitigation plan. I don't know if it's faster.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me that way?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Hi, my name's Malia Purgiero, I work across the street at the Madison Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here tonight to talk about the local hazard mitigation plan. So that's a chain effort that I've been working on with Ray and Rick Bates and some other volunteers, and it's a whole planning process. But the purpose of hazard mitigation planning is to identify actions involved that could be implemented over time, reduce risks and user losses from natural hazard events. Hazard mitigation planning enables local governments to better protect lives, property, and natural systems. So it's a five-year plan, and it talks about how to reduce disaster losses, break the cycle of disaster damage reconstruction and repeated damage.
I'm, Malia?
Yep.
I'm going to ask you to just slow down your speech just a little bit, so people can understand you.
I was going to say, did you give you only two minutes?
Thank you, dear. We can hear you good, but it...
Can I have a share of the screen? Yes.
Yeah.
My ears don't work that fast.
I was catching it a little bit, but it's moving a little fast.
Stop, share. And then that little arrow right there, multiple participants.
Thank you.
X out of that. That little menu, right there.
What happened? You didn't do anything. What were you trying to do?
Right there, you all set?
Oh. Hang on. Here we go. Now, I should have a little hand up pulled up about hazard mitigation planning.
We don't see anything, Malia.
Beautiful blue sky.
There we go. That's abuse of Madison, actually. So hazard mitigation planning, hazard mitigation plans are a five-year plan that we work with in each of our towns. The goal is to identify natural hazards that are a risk in the town, and then identify ways to mitigate and prevent it. For those disasters that should they happen? Some of the financial benefits of hazard mitigation planning, a key to a hazardous mitigation plan is required for local governments that wish to receive federal funds from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the Building and Reinventing Infrastructure and Communities Program. I'm sure some of you have heard of some of the brick projects before. So the hazard mitigation plan is also the mitigation action that you need to qualify for post-disaster funding through the ERAC fund, receive relief and assistance. Right now, where this field rate is at 12.5%, if the town is interested in having that rate elevated, then you have to, as I figured, part of protections. So the way that the ERAC funding works is that when there's a natural disaster, the people that have a corporate will reimburse taxpayers at 75%, and then the state will match that with 7%. And then, based on the town at town level, depending on what steps you take to reduce flood damage, the state will contribute extra to that percentage. Part of that percentage is also made up of having road standards, having a local emergency management plan, so that all goes toward your ERAC rating. So what's happening is the use is about the hazard mitigation plan. The town will obviously have received funding through the brick program, and we're using that brick rate to contract for the maintenance and maintenance commission to develop the plan. And then upon completion of the project, the town will be reimbursed at 75% with the brick funds, and then the 25% can be covered with local match or with cash. And that includes in time hours. So we've had three training meetings so far for this project, and all those hours that the volunteers put in will be counted for this local match. And then I just checked the numbers before the meetings today, there's another 23 hours that we'd like to contribute. That being said, everyone's attendance at the meeting plan will count for that, and then any time that can be spent between members of the flood board, members of the public, whoever has time to look through planning documents through the draft itself, any time that you spend looking at that and even just like send another chit chat with me or phone call emails, that can all count for in time match. So a little bit about the timeline, here we are in April at the select board meeting, so tonight we'll be talking about the final draft of the plan. And then the next step will be to submit it to the state for approval. And then once we get state approval, then the select board can vote to adapt the plan, so that could be next month or June, depending on when the state gets back to us. And then once the plan is adopted by the select board, then we will send it up to Vermont Emergency Management, who sends it to FEMA, who issues the final approval letter. That being said, because the hazard mitigation plan is already in process, you've already checked the box for ERAC rating. So it's, yeah. And then, next, I was just going to go through a little bit of the process of the plan, show you a couple different components that went into it, and then talk about next steps. If we have another 10 minutes, maybe?
Go.
Okay, great. So this process began back in April, where we had this Brandon and figured out the timeline and the process, and the public outreach we see there. Then we have a public meeting in May to go over the current weather data, what that looks like, and do the hazard risk assessment exercise, which I'll pull up after going through this spreadsheet here. At the next meeting, we went through the hazards, talked about vulnerable areas, and then talked about different strategies that we could pursue as a town. And then part of that is looking at historical data, looking at different town plans, looking at type hydrologic surveys, river corridor plans, those sort of related technical plans, and kind of summarizing them all within the hazard mitigation plan. Then we had the draft plan ready to review for the planning team, they went through that, and we identified actions to pursue for the final mitigation table. And then we also developed a plan for monitoring the plan, that I'll go over that too in a little bit. Then in September, the draft went out to the planning team, to the state, and to some neighboring towns and the public for review. We received comments back from Vermont Emergency Management after the holidays, they took a little longer to come back to us than typically, but now we've finally gotten the ball rolling again after the holidays, so that's good. And then this is the last meeting, where we have it at the select board and talk a bit about, with you all, about what the plan is, and ask for your comments and feedback. And then hopefully we can get the plan adopted within the next couple months or so. So one of the first things we did with the hazard planning team was fill out this hazard impact tool, we'll call it. So this, these are the different natural hazards that are identified in the state hazard mitigation plan, so we use that sort of template to go off of. And from that, we talk about what the probability of the future occurrence might be, and then what the damages would be to the different areas, including public infrastructure, life and property, economy, and the natural environment. This was more or less created based on a discussion of past previous data, and then a combination of like local knowledge or historical events, and then looking also at climate projection with climate change underway. We're seeing that some hazards are increasing in severity and frequency, so we also wanted to take that into account as well. There was a little bit of info here about what those numbers correspond with, but I don't really want to get into the nitty gritty, more or less the height and the more severe the damage is going to be, or the more likely it is to occur. So then, the last thing you do is we multiply that probability times the hazard impact, and that gives you the hazard assessment score. And that's just a way to sort of help us quantify and prioritize the hazards that we find the most adverse to the town. So the ones highlighted in orange, those are the hazards that we decide to profile, and to profile just means that there's a further discussion in each of those hazards in the plan, the looking more into that background data, looking more into the historical extent, the current extent, vulnerability, future trends. So the ones in red are the ones that you profile, and the ones that you profile are the hazards that you have to address by coming up with an action for, whether that be a mitigation action or a preparedness action. So we drew the line at 4.5, it looks like, and everything rated 4.5 and above was considered to be profiled, and then the other hazards were considered lesser importance or lesser severity, so we didn't go into as much detail at those. And most of them is just due because they're not that, they weren't prepared frequently. So once we came up with the hazards we wanted to address, then we discussed the hazard action table, so this is something that we found very familiar with for our plan. So some of the actions are taken over from the 2018 plan, it's a five-year cycle, so the last plan was out in 2018. These are some, the actions that were identified in that plan that we decided that we still wanted to pursue, then we also took note of which ones were completed. Then we also pulled the recommendations and actions from the town plan that aligned with municipal resilience, employee resiliency, of course, and bits about playing. And then the last sort of category of actions is based on conversations with the town, conversations with other planners at Madison, and then also going through those technical documents, which I can pull up a list if anyone's interested in looking at that. But from all those actions, we put together this table, the lists for each action, what type of action it is, whether it's mitigating or preparedness, hazard addresses, who the sort of responsible party is for getting that ball rolling for each action, the timeframe that we would want to get done during, and then a high, medium, low for the estimated cost roughly. And then on the far right, we have different funding sources that could be used. And then the actions are prioritized, there's a little color key here, the orange, the orange-red ones are high priority, yellow is moderate, and blue is low. And let me show you. These are the sort of criteria that we kept in mind as we discussed prioritizing those actions. And then the last thing that's sort of new with this planning cycle compared to the last planning cycle is that we have a plan monitoring and maintenance process.
What process?
Plan monitoring and evaluation. So essentially, it's just once a year, we'll check in with the planning team, look over the plan, talk about what actions have been completed, what actions are still on the to-do list, and what actions, if any, have changed to priority level, if there's any funding out that there's new priorities on the town. So the hazard mitigation planning team would look at the, look at over the actions, figure out which ones have been done, keep track of that on a form that we've included, and then those forms will be brought to a select board meeting just to inform them, keep them abreast of any changes. And that larger form looks like this, where essentially, for each action that's listed in the plan, you're tracking what progress was made, what funding was used, if there's any next steps, and that's just a way to keep track of all the different actions and whether they're still a priority to the town. And so there's always the option to add to this, to edit this, to remove from this. It's sort of a living plan, if you want to call it that, in that we look at it each year and add and change it as needed. And that's the whole process. The next steps will be sending the final version to the VEM, so I'll be doing that. Let's see. I want to give you all a chance to have time to read over it and make any comments or suggestions, so I'd like to get it to the state meeting at the end of May, so that gives you a few weeks to look over it. And then send it up to the state, and once you get the thumbs up, we can get the EMA approval, and then you're done with the process.
Any questions?
One.
Ray had his hand up earlier. Sorry.
I just have a quick statement when she was talking about your hours. So if any of you have reviewed this and it took you an hour or two, please document it and get it to me or Brandon, so we can include those hours as our share, because that reduces how much money we have to pay to have this done. So if each of you take two hours, that's 10 hours right there, that we can build towards this, so we don't have to pay as much for our share. Just a note. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, sir.
Brandon?
Malia, page 32 in the report. Let me know when you get, when you get there.
Sure. 32.
What page is it on our, on our screen, Brandon?
Page 60.
I'm looking at the, it has the NFIP program stats on it.
Yes, it says report date 6/26/2018, but the source says that it was accessed 8/22/23.
That's because the reports don't come out every year. The most recent one is from 2018, and then I just put access for keeping track of that.
Okay.
But...
But that's still information from 2012.
It's just to show that we've checked recently that that's the most recent...
I see, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any other questions? Dave?
Malia, did you get the email from Brandon, or did he copy you about the concerns that I had, or no?
Is that, is it in the email?
Yes.
Yeah, I seen that.
Okay, you've seen it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just want to bring the board up to speed. This is the site of Route 131 and Amson Schoolhouse Road. I'm very interested in somehow getting that to be more, this sounds like a really long-term project. Little Scottney Road, the idea of this is to try to figure stuff out through basically water damages wherever you're going, wherever the things are all saying here, and I'm paraphrasing a lot, to lower the costs about fixing the problem after it happens. The entire watershed from Plymouth Redding, the whole Amson Village up towards Green Bush that way, funnels down into that one area of the intersection of Amson Schoolhouse Road and Route 131. Now during Irene in 2011, Amos and Judy Jarvis put a mark on a rock right there, so that's how high the water was then. And it hasn't gotten anywhere near that level, so it hasn't gone over 131 yet. But Little Scottney Road, Ray can obviously confirm this, has been closed now since July of 2023. From estimating probably at least two weeks' time now it's been closed from variety of running over of water. And so I visited that site and the town paid for, or whatever we did to put in a pull-off there where the fire trucks can go. And I'm not sure that that did anything at all to choke that down. But there's a two-to-three-foot berm now in the water that is restricting that flow. And I'm very interested and I'm sure that all the residents are. We need to protect our transfer station.
Mr. Fuller, I'm going to stop you. Because the item on the agenda is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you have some context within the Hazard Mitigation Plan, that's appropriate. But this sounds more like a claim or an issue that you're concerned with addressing.
But it's in that. But it is in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, or it should be, I would hope so.
Yeah, we do have, well, we have an action to install some mitigations on that, right?
I don't know about stone. What I'm saying is...
Is it included in the plan or not? I guess...
It sounds like a good idea for an action that we put out into the plan.
Okay, then I'll allow you to continue, Dave.
Well, I'm just saying, the site, you know, I'm particularly bothered by the site, and I'm not alone.
I know.
The town just put a $400,000 covert in Lottery Lane. I mean, the whole water, even from over on Plains Road, Piper Road, sheds over to that site. So there's a road network, there's a number of residences and everything that are affected by that site. And if we're talking about hazard, and I read the top language where it says that we're trying to mitigate some of this to lower our costs of resolution after the facts, then it seems to fit at least to look at. And I'll stop.
Ray?
Dave, do you consider that high, medium, low?
Oh, no, it's high for me. I mean, like I said, I mean, I just, I have a lot of property around that area and it has changed from more so than Irene. Irene happened ironically in 2011, and we were able to navigate our way through Lottery Lane and leave Little Scottney Road open, and 106 had to be closed. It's strange how the topography works, but that's...
It sounds like some of that would be a good conversation for you to have with her directly as she's working on this plan. I recognize Ray to speak.
I think one way to word it, Dave, or sorry, Chair, would be to improve the flow of water through that area, not just to arrow out that one spot. But there's also that bridge, the old white hotel that they did talk about buying and tearing down. And that ledge, there's an old dam in there, the downstream of that bridge, that restricts the flow a great deal as well. So that whole area, that whole bottleneck should be in the mitigation plan to look at and try to address. And I think they'd probably call that, unfortunately, David, probably like a medium instead of a high, but it would be high, medium.
I would definitely think the state ought to be involved to protect their road, which is 131, and the flooding of 106 up the north of that. They have an interest in this.
The biggest issue there would be if they did something below the bridge or changed the bridge to make it wider. The houses in that Amson Hollow would be susceptible to a great deal of flooding right now. Everything kind of bottlenecks in that bridge area and slows the water down. So that's, anyway, that's how you word it possibly in the plan.
Malia, you got all that?
Yeah, I might connect the various factors, flush it out a little more, but...
I think that would be good. Okay, Brandon?
Malia, page 36, the annual snowfall trend and annual low temperatures.
Yep.
Is there data for 2020, '21, '22, and '23 yet?
I didn't double-check, I didn't get those updated.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I was going to ask a silly question compared to what you guys are asking. It had to do with, I saw the infectious disease thing in the chart. And it was, it came out with like an average of 1.8, but it got a rating of 3.5. And we're four is the highest. But the average didn't even reach, I mean, the average was in between unlikely and likely. But it ended up with a 3.5, which is highly likely or certain. I just tried to understand how those numbers work.
I want to have you, let's see, for infectious disease outbreak?
I think it's in the next, a little bit down from that where you are now. The next one down, isn't it? It was on mine, might not be on yours, but it went into another page on mine. And Ray, Ray got up to say something, Malia, I'm going to recognize him. Go ahead, Ray.
Just a quick, on the discussion on that infectious disease, it has a low rate of it possibly happening. And it had a high rate on the 3.5, because if it did happen, it would affect a lot of different things. It could affect the economy, it could affect a lot of health, it could affect everything. So it had a higher rate to do that. It might not happen, but we need to have a plan for it because it could be very severe across the board instead of just one issue.
Very good.
That helps.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand. Probably a lot of people that didn't. Okay, thank you, Malia, we're good on that. Any other questions for Malia or anybody?
Wouldn't that include something, would it maybe, would it include like ticks or something? Maybe that triggered something, right?
I see. I can't remember. Yeah, we have a quick sentence in here about tick or analysis being seasonal challenge and that residents believe that it's hazard risk that is of local common knowledge and not of high concern, just because most folks know, have to correct that.
I think there's a lot here, and I think going back to what Ray had said, we probably, we probably need to go over this thing, and it may take us several hours each to do that. I don't think we're going to do that sitting here tonight. And we're certainly not going to adopt this this evening. I look at this the same as I do the planning commission work. There's a lot of people in the background that have done a lot of work, and we've got to review that and know where we're at as we move forward with this document. Anything you want to add to this, or any other questions you have?
No, I agree with the additional time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the goal tonight was really just to talk about what the plan is, what we met up to, what the process has been like.
Sure. I took a lot of notes. Thank you, Malia. Any other questions before we move on from this? And everybody will have the assignment of getting to read 3,000 pages of hazard mitigation.
Does the documentation of the time that we spend reviewing this need to be in any particular format, or is it just?
No.
No, just say...
Just tell Brandon what it is? Is that all we need to do?
Yep.
And if you could include like the date and the hours, that would be good. And also...
Yeah, it's the number of hours.
Your name.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, don't wait until the end of May to ask them. I'm sure if you emailed them, it would be better for her and us to get those questions sooner.
And who should we email them to?
I would take Brandon, and Brandon could pass them on. Unless you want to do both of us, and we can both pass it on, Brandon, whatever. I don't want to give you too much more work.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it'd just be helpful if they got the questions as you thought of them.
Oh, I agree.
And you can receive that email from the office. I'm happy to sit down with folks and chat. I'd rather do that than, you know, back before I did that, so.
So Ray and Dave already have a little bit of an assignment there to work on that. Amson Schoolhouse area with you. Anybody else, anything else? No?
I got one more thing.
Okay, Brandon, go.
Malia, what's the volunteer hour rate?
A lot.
So I think it's 31.8, off the top of my head.
We're getting paid for that when we submit it?
That contributes our, that contributes our grant.
I just feel like it's getting you job, right?
And I think you guys are in overtime, because this is after normal hours, so.
Olivia said she does another raise, Dave!
Olivia said she just quit, so she's going to go 32.
Sign me up. Okay, all right, everybody. Hazard mitigation plan, when is this coming back to us now? When do we want to be ready with this? You said May.
End of May, she said. So beginning of June for us.
I think it goes through September, so we have a little bit of a...
Okay, so you got that, Brandon, you're all set? So you know what we're doing here?
Yeah, the second, well, you'll be ready by the second meeting in May, Malia, which is May 20th?
But...
Or would you prefer June? We can talk about that.
We don't need to, we don't need to meet again, so I'm hoping to get comments from everyone back by then. May is like you get it, so to the state, and then once the state has it, we have to wait for them to approve it. So we don't necessarily need to meet for that.
Yeah, it sounds like a moving target, and she'll let us know. Does that sound about right? Malia, you let us know when you're ready, and we'll let Brandon know, and we'll get that on here, okay?
That works for me.
Okay. Brandon, that good for you?
Yep, that works.
Okay. All right, next. Thank you, Malia, good night. Next up, salt shedder alternatives. Do we have lots of pictures now?
My name's Chris Rivet, I'm with the Boy and King. I don't have any presentation for PowerPoint, but I do have a lot of pretty pictures to show as I go through and talk about the salt shed project.
You guys also have the maps here printed.
Some of them you do. Some of it, some of the other ones you will see for the first time. I had, since we, since I did the local concerns meeting back in December, we've been going through not only particular alternatives, but looking at the site's existing conditions, basically the town garage site. And I wasn't thinking ahead. I had already provided the existing conditions portion of our scoping study report to Ray and Monta Scottney Regional Commission and Brandon. But I did not reprint that as part of the alternatives presentation. So I printed out those so that you could all kind of see what we've been, what we worked through, what we took into consideration for the existing conditions of the site, and then move into the alternatives presentation for it. So what we've been doing since the last meeting is reviewing the existing conditions, as I said. We took into account things like land use, zoning, site topography, environmental resources, whether that be wetlands, rivers, water supply wells. We took into account how the site is used, what type of circulation patterns that Ray uses throughout the site, which is pretty much two-way traffic. And then we've also, we also have UVM on board looking at archaeological and historical resources in the area. So first couple of things, as I mentioned, land use and zoning. We kind of understand what the land use is. It's the town garage already. It's a sizable site. We don't feel that there's going to be any conflicts with, you know, zoning setbacks or anything like that. But we just looked at them just to, you know, cross all the i's, dot all the t's, and move ahead with that to make sure that there's no right-of-way issues with any butters. That being said, the site is huge, and we can put the proposed shed right in the middle. As part of this, we looked at, this one, we took into account the site topography as well as what we anticipate being water flow. So pretty much from the town garage itself, everything kind of flows away towards the north branch of the Black River or the Black River. Anything that may be coming across the, across Stoughton Pond Road actually kind of gets funneled along the roadway and away from the town garage anyway. So there's not a huge concern there in terms of, you know, having to worry about water flow. Where's my next one here? We looked at environmental resources, so rare, threatened, endangered species. Let me see if I have that. Yep. So we took a look to see if constructing anything new would have any impact. The site's very open, so there's very little chance of that. What we did find around the areas, we found some, you know, instances where different types of bats were found. There's even a clam-tipped emerald. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but it's in the river. But given that it's not on the site, we're going to be looking at the very center of the site. We feel there's very little chance of us actually disturbing any of those rare, threatened, endangered species that are around. The whole map is red because of the northern long-eared bat that is throughout Vermont. And, you know, we look for trees of a certain size, basically, that could be, you know, roosting areas. Given that the site's still open, again, it doesn't look to be too much of an issue. Additionally, we looked at wetlands and river corridors and floodplains. So this first one is wetlands. There's some wetlands associated with the Black River and the north branch of the Black River. Again, well away from the site, not too much concern about, you know, interfering with construction. One of the concerns from, that we talked about previously and why this came up is just any potential for groundwater contamination from salt. I know we mentioned the contamination that happened a long time ago along Stoughton Pond Road here that eventually made it to a neighboring well. That groundwater tends to be able to migrate to these wellings as well. So it's kind of a long-term view of it. Short-term, constructing, not a problem. But we also want to make sure that in the future, you know, that doesn't happen again, if you will. And same goes for the rivers and the river corridors. Again, construction, we have a little bit of a floodplain that shows up here just on the edge of the property. Given the slopes that are along this eastern edge, we don't, we think that might be a little off for the floodplain. But again, we're looking right next to the garage site, and we feel that we're not going to have too much issue with any flooding or floodplain or even need to talk to the reverse folks about potential impacts. And the last thing we looked at, in terms of existing conditions, well, I guess there's two more things, the soils here. This is a pretty picture. Most of these graphics are included in the actual plan, which I'll update, Brandon, and I'll resend that to you so that everybody can take a look at it. I don't think we're going to get to a point where we pick an alternative tonight, unless you all feel really comfortable with it, or if you would like some time to look over the whole report at where we're at now. Then feel free, and I can update that and send everything out again. This pretty picture is all the different soils on the site. This main blue area here is, it's designated as pits, sand, and gravels. It's obviously a very sandy site. You can tell that just by walking around there and seeing how it's been utilized and, you know, the town's used it over the years for various pulling sand out and things like that to make it what they need it to be, or even using some of the material for other uses. And lastly, as I mentioned, we got, we got a UVM on board with the archaeological and historical. I haven't received the report from them, so it's not included yet in our draft. But if, in talking with them, they basically have no concerns. But if, in talking with them, they basically have no concerns. This site's been disturbed for years, they don't anticipate, you know, having any sort of archaeological or historical impacts in terms of that. So now to the main part of our project and there's probably some more information here. The alternatives we looked at were basically, one, something to replace what's there now with a little bit bigger sizing. Ray's ideal, which would be able to have all, an entire year's worth of salt and be able to have the salt unloaded into the stockpile within a building or a structure that's covered and be able to load trucks to as they need it throughout the winter time. And potentially even store the chloride tanks in there as well, correct? So that's what we looked at. So alternative one is that, you know, as big as we can go to make sure that we can fit everything we want, loading, unloading, the chloride tanks, et cetera. And that building is basically one hundred and twenty by eighty-five feet is what we came up with for a size. We would anticipate looking at an arch structure and fabric like you would see, you know, in most farms or even in some other sand and stockpile sheds. I actually have a, just something to kind of illustrate that, what this is. This would be an example of what we'd be looking at. And we also have a couple of different alternatives within that sizing too, which I'll show you, which we'll get into at the end. So what we've proposed here is having that structure set on six-foot-high concrete walls. It would have a footing down below the grade, down below grade to make sure that the structure doesn't move. And it would be set on that. We obviously don't look at heating or heating that building or plumbing or anything like that. There may be lighting if we want to have a light for any night work as they're coming in there. So there, so that's what we've looked at. And... Where am I going with this? The pros for that are obviously we get everything we want. The con in this case is the biggest one, it's the cost. You'll notice in the evaluation matrix that I only put dollar signs so far, I hadn't had a full idea, but I do have, I do have a number to throw out there conceptually at this point based on a project that we just did a, we're about sixty percent of the way through the design, where we did an opinion of cost for that. It's essentially the same style building and that's ranging in the one hundred and fifty to nine-hundred thousand range for the building, excavation, and all the, all the good things that come with it.
What's the durability of that hoopt structure that you showed?
So those tend to last quite a few years. The steel, the steel can hold up for a lot longer and I think in talking with a couple of different towns, they've replaced their fabric at twenty, thirty years down the road. You know, depending on where it is, if it's really windy, it might be, you know, it might be less depending on those situations. I know I was talking, I was down in Springfield at their salt shed just a few weeks ago and they said that theirs was thirty years old. It had a few tears in it, but actually it might have been earlier than that. It was, I think they said they put it in the eighties. So it's actually forty years and they haven't done a whole heck of a lot to it. But now that's why they're looking, they're going to go through the same process that we're going through now with you guys, looking at different options for their sheds as well. So they can last a long time and, you know, the biggest degradation is going to happen in that fabric and the steel can typically last a lot longer for that. That being said, there's a second shed style alternative, which I've seen more recently, which is actually setting the arches on piers. So they're just, you know, like a light pole base almost and having a bunker wall inside it. More bunker style that you would see like on a farm. I have that one here too, which I actually, just based on a quick, in talking with Camp Precast, you can see the arch structure itself is set on these piers and the bunker walls are set just inside. In talking with Camp Precast and getting a price for those, these are precast walls, they're eight feet long. I think, like I said, what I've looked at is that probably reduces the cost about one hundred and twenty-five thousand or so for this size structure. That, and that's because there's a footing already built into the wall and all the soils can be stockpiled right on top of the footing, you can pave right up to the edges of it. And, you know, it should be able to hold up pretty well. So we've looked at that alternative for each one of these, that's kind of like A and B. The first one being that full concrete wall where the structure sits right on top of it, which puts a lot more force than just the sand, but it also has to support the structure too and not return. So that's option A. Alternative one. Alternative two is kind of the middle of the road between, you know, the bare minimum and the getting everything we want. We've come up with, it's about half-capacity, so half a year's worth of salt. But it still enables us to, it's still sized large enough to be able to load and unload inside the building and it likely won't hold the chloride tanks. So there's that. You know, the two alternatives are the same, concrete foundation or the bunker walls inside. Obviously, this one has a smaller footing, it'll cost less, but you get less capacity for it. And I know, at least in talking with you, it sounds like it's not always easy to get salt in the middle of the winter or can be tricky depending on timing.
Right now I can get through maybe two storms with what I can fit. And I would be happy with a third or a half. I mean, I don't have to store a whole year's worth.
Okay.
That was the gold plan.
All right. Each of these alternatives as well, one thing that I hadn't mentioned, it'll help improve some of the function that Ray and I had discussed during our kickoff meeting, where if somebody's loading sand in a truck here, it's rather difficult or at least is in the way if somebody else wants to be loading salt at that time. And he said having this over here and the sand pile kind of separated would also provide like an improved operation from his perspective. And so all three of those alternatives provide that as well. This one, I had rough cost in the six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand range for the full concrete foundation. Again, it's about a hundred thousand dollars less for the bunker style, which, you know, looks, you know, would work just as well, so. And then the last one, I mean, the last actual alternative we have, basically, we've assumed we can fit a full year's worth of salt, but it would be just big enough to store the salt. So all the operations and things would happen outside the shed as they do now. Where the loader, the truck bringing in the salt would have to dump it just outside the shed and it would have to be pushed in by the town personnel. That one, oh, the half, sorry, I have to go back. The half-capacity was about a ninety-foot by seventy-five-foot building. The, this alternative three is sixty by forty. And that one would be just under five-hundred thousand with an additional, for the full foundation, if we do, if you could go the bunker style, roughly, these are all rough conceptual numbers at this point, but about seventy-five thousand is what I was getting, less with that bunker style. So those are the differences. Fourth alternative, which, you know, is just a requirement of going through this process, is a do-nothing approach. Continue with the operation as it is. We all, I think we all kind of understand that the shed itself is starting to fail. It's deteriorating, cracking, spalling. And, you know, sometime in the future could present an unsafe situation if it were to, you know, catastrophically fail. But I don't think that's likely to happen before action is taken on it, so. That's my presentation for the most part. The things we took into consideration in our evaluation matrix had to do with natural resources permitting, land use and operations. Really, the difference between these are the improved operations of being able to load and unload undercover.
All set? Ray, you want to speak to this?
This shed is something that we talked about five years ago and you asked me to start looking for grants. I've been working on trying to get grants and Martha brought up a valid point where if you don't have a design already in place, you're not going to get these grants to build. So keep in mind now that we, if we select one of these, whatever one it might be, or choose two of them, whatever, that enables us to really aggressively pursue the grants and have a higher possibility of getting one. So we might end up paying only twenty percent of a project, just so we know. If it fails and we can't get a grant, we should probably figure on trying to save up some money or make a plan, a backup Plan B to pay for it ourselves if we have to. And obviously, the almost million-dollar shed is the gold dream if it's a perfect world and I happen to hit mega bucks or something. And the number two is the more reasonable. We could even tone that down maybe a little bit more and have a third of a year instead of a half a year of salt. My goal is to be able to do it all undercover so we're not dumping salt on the ground. That's kind of defeats the purpose of having a new shed to prevent the water, groundwater damage.
And questions from the board, anybody? Go, Nick.
Doing nothing's not an option. I don't know what is, but for you new members, the ceiling, let go because we used to dump sand, salt from the top, the trucks through the years. I mean, it served its purpose, I mean, it lasted a long time, but rebar was showing and we did spend some money. I think we put a couple of beams in there, but the left wall, if you look at it from the face, the left wall is starting to compromise, so doing nothing's not the answer. I don't know what is, but I'll throw that out there.
And it sounds like the other major concern is to definitely get inside with all operations.
Either that or you have to pave more of the yard outside and hope it doesn't run, you know, drain it somehow so you can catch the water and not have it go into the ground, which is, and how expensive, it probably hasn't been part of this plan.
Not yet, no.
So that would even make it cost more to be outside. So yeah, that's my goal.
What types, in the past, I think you were looking at grants, what were you seeing for available funds from grants?
There is an availability and there has been success, but most of the success has come from going through this process first.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, the numbers, what are the grant numbers? How much, how much?
Usually it's about a twenty percent is the max.
Okay, so it depends on what you do, you just get the twenty, and the rest, okay, I got it. So they are offering, I guess, up to, you know...
And some grants will allow in-kind, I don't know, we'd have to do more research. So if they do in-kind, we might be able to do prep work with our equipment or whatever to help out to shave some of that cost if possible. It all depends on the grants.
Yes, so the following on from this one, if we were to go through the same grant funding program, the MAB, stormwater mitigation, V-Trans offers through that up to five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. And that would, that five-hundred-thousand dollars, or no matter what, you know, value that is, there's a twenty percent match. And so the project planned number for that would be six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand with your twenty percent match or less.
Where you go with the five-hundred-thousand and you get a hundred thousand to match. So that you only spend five-hundred-thousand, twenty percent of five-hundred-thousand.
Whatever you, you can spend up to five-hundred-thousand, you're going to get eighty percent back of whatever you spend.
Yes.
See, better off to spend five-hundred and have the project be six-hundred-and-twenty-five, you know what I mean?
I do, I think.
But we still have to make up twenty percent, right?
Yeah.
So was the, and I've, the meeting's already been long. So did I see the picture right, where, is it closed on one end?
It could be, it could be closed on one end or we could have two doors on either end so you can drive right through. I think I had that. Oh, I didn't have that here.
That's okay.
It was, it's in, it's in the report section.
It's not a solid wall all the way up.
So it's not a drive-through, it's...
You can do it either way.
You can do, yeah, you could do one of these sheds either way, where you would have, yeah, this one here, where it's not, it's closed off in the back there. But you could do it where you drive, you create an opening here and drive all the way through.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is because I don't really know, but I know the state has been lowering their use of salt and everything. So suppose someday we have something else come up similar to what I just spoke about, the zoning, whatever the regulations we went through. So what would you use the building for? It seems like it would be pretty good, but you have a clear...
Hanger! Sorry.
So I don't see that as being bad, that was a good thing.
But there is a lot of technology out there with liquids instead of solids, be it plant-based or whatever, and that's where you can store all your tanks. You know, that, you still have to have a place to store all crap or stuff.
What, just out of curiosity, what type of wind, that building right there like that with an open end on it, what type of wind can that take, withstand?
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that question. I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know the exact answer. I know that they are designed to state standards or to, you know, specific wind loads.
I don't want to see it turn into a parasail.
Yeah.
And that's why you have the windows at the back that are open, so the wind can go through it all the way?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you could, you could keep the whole back open if you wanted to, you could have it just go right through.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if it was a drive-through and you had that kind of an issue, you could open it up so it doesn't...
Yep.
You know. John?
Question, I assume the frames are heavily galvanized, what's the lifespan of the frame in that kind of environment?
Those, probably forty or fifty years is my guess. I know, like I said, Springfield's is older than the forty years that they have and it's just now starting to rust out. They've had a few small issues, but...
That unit that they've had for forty years, can you describe that for us, for those of us?
Basically, it looks like this.
It's basically like that right there?
It looks like that. It's set, it's forty feet wide by eighty feet long and it's set on a concrete foundation, essentially, that's about six feet high.
Full concrete floor?
Asphalt floor.
Asphalt floor.
Yep. Their asphalt is starting to break up now after so many years.
Concrete tends to break up, react badly with salt.
Yes.
To use asphalt on the floor. They still use concrete for the walls, but they try to get those rods up on top of the foundation so salt's not laying against all the steel. That's the goal.
Yeah, so that's, and that's what, essentially what Springfield does. This is a pretty tall example. What we'd be looking at would be, you know, only about six feet. And then the covering would be over it. The difference, the difference between these two is the walls on this take the forces of the salt and the arches, so they have to be designed a little bit stronger, whereas those bunker silo walls are ju, you know, they're relieving the pressure of the sand on the arch structure itself.
And what about, like, if you're going to be doing the work, loading and unloading, et cetera, inside, what are the, I mean, you can open it right up, so emissions, I guess, aren't that big of a deal?
Yeah, no.
No.
They would be open. That, that opening is huge on that picture.
Yeah, well, yeah, you've got the guy standing there.
Just a tiny fella.
Yeah.
Well, even on the half one, the dimension though, the machinery could be in there if you decided not to have a really lot of salt. So in other words, if you didn't take, I don't know what it says here, like 600 yards, if you said, okay, we're going to take 300, that leaves you more operational room in the building.
Right.
At one time.
And again, I really wanted to show, like, he asked me, that's the goal, that's like, in a perfect world, when money doesn't matter. And then you end up figuring out what you can afford and what's reasonable.
I heard you say something about the lottery ticket, and I can assure you, you would, your wife would not be sending a million dollars on a shed if you won the lottery.
Probably be my ex-wife.
I was going to make that.
Probably take that and go.
I was going to make that same comment. I don't think you'd be spending it on that amount of town.
John?
Will this project trigger stormwater permit?
Uh, no, I don't believe it will. The shed is not big enough to trigger, to trigger stormwater. Uh, that being said, now that I think about it, probably is.
The roof itself, stormwater permit usually goes by like the parking lot, not the roof itself?
It, um, it would actually depend on the shed size. If it exceeds 5,000 square feet at this point, it would trigger it, because there is more than, well, now it's a half an acre of impervious, so it's, it's dependent on the, the minimum 5,000 for an existing site that already has impervious, but if it triggers a threshold that exceeds, it's now a half an acre threshold. So likely, it might if we get to the biggest size, but I don't think, I don't think we'll trigger it with, with that half capacity.
If it does, the three acre rule, which is already in effect on the west side of the Green Mountains, is going to come our side of the mountains in somewhere around 2030.
2030, true.
And it may be wise to design whatever we do to be up to date and not have to do it all over.
Yep.
Anything over three acres, you're going to have to have a mitigation plan, and what I've seen of the numbers is expensive.
Yes. It, it has not been a, a low-cost process for anybody who has gone through the three acre.
And that side in particular, because it's so close to the river, the good thing is it's sandy.
The good thing is it's sandy, and there, there's a lot of opportunity to be able to, you know, infiltrate that water there. But again, keeping the salt out of it is important. The stormwater itself is treated nicely.
So, so, okay, so where are we at tonight? What are we doing tonight? Anything?
Uh, if you got, it, just, you don't have to necessarily pick an, an alternative, you can take some time to think it over, maybe choose one at another meeting, or I can come back and we can talk a little bit more. But this was to present it to you, get feedback from you, thoughts, concerns, that kind of thing, and then, yeah, at probably a future meeting. Actually, there's, there is intended to be a third meeting where we present a final alternative, a chosen alternative, to the select board and, and say, this is what we're, what we'd like to go with, and this is how we're, you know, we'll finalize our report that way.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a deadline of, what, June 1st?
Uh, it's probably going to end up getting pushed back at this point.
There's a deadline for the grant itself. Do we have to get?
Yes, and, and, yeah, and Scott Gurelli did say that those grant timelines can be extended.
Okay, good, thank you.
So I, 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 yeah, listening to Ray and Dave's questions for points, I'm wondering if the two of them ought to discuss this a little bit. We used to have a highway representative to the select board, we, we don't have one of those at the moment, but what I was hearing Dave talk about was the ability to have machinery inside of that building. So that kind of speaks to what that size is going to be.
Well, here's an even, here's an even, a bigger deal. So, and it just hit me right here. My cow barn is 60 by 144. I mean, that almost matches option number one. My red barn is 40 by 64.
So it's matches.
The barn that's down, barn that's down below the other one.
And matches option two.
If anybody wants to come look to see what the dimensions are.
60, 40 is the option three.
Oh, that's right, that's, that's right.
No, I'm just saying, if you want to see a building that is going to be about the dimension, what that is, not the height.
Right.
But, but the square footage.
What, what is the, I mean, what would, what is the, well, I guess you haven't really got there, the proposed internal height, what, what is it?
The intended height would be around the 34 to 36 foot high internally.
And is it, is that the peak of the arch, or is that at the?
That would be, that would be at the underside of the arch.
Okay.
The underside of the, the frame.
And at the top of the wall, where is that?
That would be six feet. So there, there are arches.
Not the concrete wall, the tent, all the way up, keep going up, right there, no? Right there.
Right here.
Where's that? Well, that corner, that corner that's right there where your pinky just was.
It's probably 20 feet. Just do the math.
I'm just thinking about what you had said before about, you know, a truck going in there in, in a dump or a bucket or something hitting it.
That's why, that's.
That's why the peak is 34, 36 feet highest, because that's where the dump, that's where the dump would fit.
It's actually designed to be high enough for a tractor trailer to dump in there, because that's what they deliver.
Okay, wow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't go 37.
No. No. No, you can't do that. Um, okay.
No, and that's really good to know, actually. So, so that, that, you're designing that for a tractor trailer? Because, all kidding aside, you don't want a two-foot short.
No.
Height.
No.
Yeah. Uh, you know, there is the option, if it's a little bit shorter than that, they could pull in partially and just not have that, have the, the complete body.
And you're still not dumping outside.
And it would still be, it would still be dumping inside.
Correct. Well, they don't have any live bottoms on the?
They have, they put poly in the bottom, which is really slippery, but they still have to go up almost all the way.
Okay.
Yeah, those are all considerations, of dumping inside, and if we can come back with salt in your truck, you got to dump that off too. So right now, we're dumping it pretty much on the ground or in the entrance and it's looking.
So I, I guess it still leaves us looking at the two things. What is it, what is it you really want? What are we going to give you? And how are we going to pay for it? I guess that's three things. But we're not deciding all of those things tonight. So where, where's the board want to go now? Any other questions at this, at this time?
Well, so we just heard what AOT said June 1st, and sometimes these, I, I think we should think about maybe giving an answer by the end of May. When do we go into the one meeting month thing? Do we go into? The reason I say that is because anytime these moving targets are given, they tend to all of a sudden, then they change and they say, whoops, you lost that round of grants.
Yeah, surprise, surprise.
Yeah, no kidding. So I'd be a little nervous about that.
Yeah, the, the V-Trans stormwater mitigation grants actually are, I believe they're in the fall, right, Martha? That they, the, the applications are due.
I would really, it would be nice if we had this done, obviously, before, so if the next round's like an apply.
Yep. Right.
My recommendation, if it's wanted, I reviewed this, and I kind of have an idea of what I'm looking at, which is the, the half, the half a year, or maybe a little less, a third of a year, and then still being able to load inside. That's where I'm kind of at.
And what kind of, what kind of cement structure, the barrier walls or the?
I have not yet decided, I think I prefer that.
This one here?
Yeah, they're just a lot stronger, but it's all money.
Well, it's a lot more secure too. Well, it's also money if you put it down so low that the salt ends up around those steel bars and rots them out really quick, and then you've got a, you know, building that's got to be replaced.
The one thing I will say about these, there are options out in the Midwest of various heights of these. The one that Camp Precast has, they only have one mold for this type of bunker silo, and it's actually 12 feet tall.
12 feet?
Yeah. So the, so the structure will sit up a little bit higher, and then this, you know, the straight part will be just up and over it.
I would have to do research myself or whatever to, to look at it. I don't know about that style a lot, so.
So I guess it's, it's, those would be the questions that we'd need to deal with here.
And what I can do, what I'm planning on doing is, again, I'll update the whole report, everything we've gone through from the very beginning. I'll include the costs as well, because I, again, I hadn't had those in hand when I provided this, I wanted to make sure we got on the board for tonight. And then I'll update those and, and provide those to you as well.
And the decision you're actually looking for us to make is to say, move forward with exploring this design?
Completing that design, and that would be our final design, and that's what I'd base the grant on.
Gotcha.
And pay that for. Uh, you can pick the size, and you can decide the wall thing later, it doesn't really, I don't think that affects you much.
And, and you need that answered by?
I, I personally would like it sooner than later, just so we can make sure that we can be in the next cycle with a design.
Can you do it by the end of May?
Yeah. I, I believe, I mean, the thing's not until September or October that it's due, usually.
Okay.
And, and that, yeah. I mean, I'm not drawing the plan, he is, but.
End of May? End of May?
Yeah, yeah. I would say the deadline would be the end of May to give him the answer, what shed we look at.
Well, I don't, I don't want to push it at, at the end of September.
No.
You know, that's a surprise that we were just talking about, we, we don't want to get there. Martha?
So is the desire to keep the total project cost below 625, since the maximum grant is 500,000? You know, anything, if you keep going up in price, you're not going to get more than 500,000.
Yeah, anything above that 625, and it's no longer considered a match, the rest of it is town funds. Or another grant of some sort from somewhere.
I, I got, I got you.
I've been hearing from other planners and other RPCs that those salt shed costs are just escalating.
Number two, uh, uh, number two that was recommended was a 50% annual size. And you're talking about going down possibly to a 30, I don't know how much that's really going to change the size of the building or the cost.
I don't either, that would be a question. If we went down to a third.
I can look at it.
And the goal is to still be able to load inside.
But, yeah, the, the calculate, the, the volume calculation doesn't take that much extra effort, so we can, we can plug that in and figure that out.
If the board made a motion, right, made, had the problem, you looking at something around option two, which is looking at a partial year, do you need it more specific than that?
I'd say change it from 50% to, you know, a third, 10%.
Yeah, and have a building size.
I, I don't know that we need a motion at this time for that, though.
They need to move forward with what they have to do.
Yeah, well, the tricky part would be when that comes back, where does that land financially? Is it within the, the 620, 645, or is it greater than that? And, and even at 620, where's that 120 coming from? Now, that's, that's the part we got to figure out. What are we going to do? So, but I guess that, that at least gives you some direction on where to, to go with as far as, you know, what you want to do and timeline to get it in and start working, moving forward.
One other thing, just to keep in mind, is that if you start down this road and you get the grant, and you start doing the design part of it, say you put 100,000 into the design portion, and then costs are escalating and escalating, and now it's up to 750 for the design that you chose, you're still not going to get the more additional funds. So, and if you don't proceed, you have to pay back what you used for design.
Okay.
That's just a cautionary note.
Yep. I've had one town do that.
So is what he's getting paid for is grant money right now? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other, any other information anybody needs on this topic? All set? Ray, you're all set? Okay, and Brandon here, you got your answer?
If I can just clarify, this portion, this is not part of that, this is paid for by grant funds. You're not going to have to pay this back.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that.
Design, that's when you get into the design and construction, the next stage.
Oh, okay.
It's a design and construction grant, if you went ahead and designed it, and then you say, oh my God, this is too much, we're going to back out, you've got to pay them back, you're not going to, you're not going to cover that whatever, whatever the design costs.
Whatever the design costs. Pay back to V-Trans.
It's still being planned.
Okay.
Okay, so, so as far as moving, like, having to go to the room third size and trying to get those numbers, that's still under this grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. Just want to be clear. Yeah, okay, good.
And you've finished for the moment, then your job is finished? Until we figure it out, or?
No, I'm, like I said, I'm going to go back and I'm providing you additional information in a more structured document here.
Thank you, John.
With some plan, with some additional plans, I'll, I'll include some of this information that I've provided tonight, so you have a full picture of everything, because I had only just provided the, the three alternatives and where we thought they were going to go. The little descriptions, we did provide a, a little graphic of how the, the, the salt pile and the loading and unloading could occur inside the building. That's within the, the text itself. And then, yeah, the last part of it, once you choose a direction, is we finalize a scoping report, and then present that.
And so you're working on it with Ray?
Yeah.
Because he, he's the, he's the man of the hour on this.
Yep.
Okay? All set? Thank you very much. Good one, Tom. We'll see you again.
Have a nice evening.
Room escalator bid. Brandon, you start this off?
Hi, Ken. So we advertised the invitation for bids, we advertised it in the Valley News, the town website, and also the Vermont Bid Registry. We received two bids, we conducted a public bid opening, and the two bids that we received are from Quality Fleet Services and Wood CRW Corporation. Quality Fleet Services came in at 326, Wood CRW came in at 225. The trade-in offer for Quality Fleet Services is 28,000, Wood CRW Corporation is 27,000. They both include a five-year warranty. Quality Fleet does now offer a six- or seven-year warranty or a five-year service plan, whereas Wood CRW Corporation does, it's $850 more for the six-year warranty, or 1635 for the seven-year warranty. They do offer the five-year service contract, I mean, that's 12,000 extra dollars. Closest service location for Quality Fleet is in South Hadley, Massachusetts, whereas for Wood CRW Corporation is in Williston, Vermont. Brandon and I reviewed these two bids, and the recommendation is to accept Wood CRW Corporation with the seven-year warranty option, five-year service agreement. The total cost after trading in, 2,009 cat backhoe, and including the warranty and service agreement is 213,000. Following the select board's decision tonight, if it's a decision in favor of moving forward with this recommendation, we'll meet with the treasurer and discuss financing options. So at the next meeting, we'd be prepared to present financing options. The town did vote to borrow up to 150,000 to replace the backhoe, and we do have highway equipment acquisition reserve account, which currently has a balance of 223,000.
So the borrowing, I mean, I know you're going to get to, that means, that was a 63 over the borrowing that was authorized by the taxpayers, right?
It was up to 150,000, so we're going to look at, the reason why we left it like that is because we're going to look at different financing options. There is a 0% interest option that we want to look into, that's 36 months. We also want to look at five-year and seven-year options. So we could borrow a hundred and five, for example, and do the net difference from reserves or a combination of things. So I think I want to talk to the treasurer about that tomorrow, um, depending on what the board decides, and find the best financing mechanism.
Any questions for the board regarding, um, no, the, the bid that we've received and what you've heard so far on the possible financing? Up to a hundred and fifty thousand is authorized for borrowing, and there's also a potential, um, option for, I think, a zero percent finance?
Yes.
Um, but that would still only be for up to a hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Yeah, the vendor is authorized up to a hundred and fifty thousand, we can't exceed that.
Correct.
But that's not until the next, until July first?
I'm not sure what that point has to do with it.
The, the first payment wouldn't be due until that.
Oh, okay.
You get the loan, they have it in, they call it in the rears.
Okay.
So you pay it a year later, is your first payment. So that way you can budget accordingly.
What's the wishes of the board? Does the board want to accept the recommendation, make a motion to, uh, accept the bid for, uh, Wood CRW Corporation or the, uh, wheeled excavator?
It's one of the things we talked about when we went to bid, was just making sure the machine matched what we need, right? And so from what you guys, your expertise and looking, the way they came back on the specs, are you feeling like that is the machine that would do what you need it to do?
Go ahead, Ray.
Maybe we should move that to this side.
I, I think both the machines, both the bids came in, um, that met or exceeded the minimum spec, and the minimum spec is what we picked as what would be adequate to do the work we need to do. So that, that, that spec sheet we sent out was the minimum spec, and if you met it or exceeded it, you just write yes or no, and then why, how you exceeded it, and then the cost. So it came down to cost. And one was a hundred and three thousand dollars more than the other. That's, that's a lot, I mean, um, one obviously had a municipal discount, I didn't see one on the other bid, whether they had it or not, it doesn't, that's what they bid, so.
The, uh, the warranties and service contracts are, are important as well. Uh, we've been doing that with our equipment that we've been buying.
Yes.
And whoever doesn't, whoever doesn't realize that the service contract's not just the work of doing the service, it's actually buying all the oil, all the filters the day we buy the machine. So for five years, it doesn't matter how much those costs go up for those filters and that oil and that grease, um, it's all paid for now. So we save up to three, uh, thirty percent or a third. I know with the cat grader, we saved up to a third in cost just by buying a five-year service plan, because you're going to buy the oil anyway. You have to buy it to do the oil changes and whatnot, so if you pay ahead, you, you skip all those increases, as a general rule of thumb.
Good for ten days.
So, any other questions regarding the bid? Dave?
Um, just for the record, when you read the specs, the service contract is not the same, I know one company doesn't offer it, but, so the way around that, Ray, is that the mileage and the call-out is not included in that number, which is, which any company could, could, um, work to their rules and not the town rules. So that number of twelve, five, thirty-seven doesn't include a trip charge or, I don't know, they wrote, you'd have to read the specs, um, for the length of the contract. So you somehow have to calculate in that you're going to get a bill for that service, filters and oil, that, and probably the disposal is accurate, but, um, mileage and a trip charge was not included.
So you would, you would look at the chart and calculate what, how many times they're going to come? You know how many miles it is, and they charge X amount of dollars per mile, and it takes them an hour or an hour and a half each time to get here and back, so there's three hours of labor. So their labor rate, that would be in addition to this, and it wouldn't be paid for upfront. You wouldn't save any money on that, you'd still be paying for that.
My, my point is that, that all the service trucks have really stepped on the bills. Um, you know, it's not unusual to get up into two hundred dollars an hour plus.
Right.
Fifty or three dollars a mile, both ways. You can't get anybody come to service, even my Haybailer, it's three hundred dollars just to walk in the yard before they turn a wrench.
So there is times where a five hundred hour service is going to happen, and it takes, you know, five or six hours, you look at what they're going to charge you to come in there and go back, and you might hire a trailer cheaper to drive it up there, drop it off, and then pick it back up and bring it back cheaper. You have to look at that, you have to figure all that out, you know.
Uh, but this, but the service contract still is, is worth having.
The service, yes, the service contract pays for every single service that machine's going to need from the time, it's the same thing with cat. They come, we, with cat, we do oil checks or oil samples every two hundred and fifty hours, and every five hundred hours, they show up and do a service. So we do two fifty, they do five, we do seven fifty, they do a thousand. So it's, you know, it definitely saves all the oil, everything's paid for. It definitely saves right out of the gate.
Okay.
Up to a third, just on oil and filters. But yeah, like Dave said, you're going to be paying for the trucking and the labor for them to get it back. But this, when they're there doing the work, that labor is included.
Yeah, but you're going to pay that, whether you have the service contract or not, you're going to pay for that man and that trucking.
Correct. And then you're going to pay for the hourly rate plus.
Yep.
Oil and filters.
Yep.
As you go.
So, so is there a motion, uh, to accept this? Anybody? Not hearing much.
I can make that motion to accept the recommendation.
Uh, the recommendation is to accept. Brandon, you want to?
Yes, uh, to ex, to accept the bid from Wood CRW Corporation with the seven-year warranty option, five-year service agreement.
And that's it for them, right? Because financing comes later?
Yeah, and that.
Financing to be.
It's a trade-in of twenty, of our two thousand nine cat backhoe for twenty-seven thousand.
You okay with that?
Yep.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
They have a motion in the second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Go.
Here's where I'm at. It shouldn't come to a surprise that I don't support this, because I don't think fair opportunity was given. I want to give credit to my father, who's been gone since July seventeenth of two thousand and eight, who served this board and sat right in this chair, and believe it or not, you can't make this up, he was involved with the backhoe controversy. Um, the specs at the time, the, the board at that time, and we're going back twenty-five or thirty years, really felt strongly about having Caterpillar, believe it or not, and they wrote the specs that kind of gave it to Caterpillar. And he objected for, for opportunity. He had bought some things from Townline, and he was approached by Bob Marazo to say, why not me? And so the board at that time then said, oh, we might have a little bit of a problem here, and they retr, they regrouped and they did, and they did, um, revisit their, um, process. But then, um, when it came time for decision, the, and the bids came in, and there were, there were a number of bids. There were John Deere, there was Caterpillar, there was Case, there might even be a couple of other brands. Um, the board opted to buy the highest one, which was Caterpillar. And my father got very upset, folded up his books and walked out, and he said, why are we even going through the bid process? Um, I'm not going to fold up my books and, and, and leave, but I don't think that I have gotten my questions answered, and, um, so that's why I'm at where I'm at. And I'll take it up, I'll, I probably will take it up under evaluations of a different kind, because communication is at the forefront of our being here. Otherwise, you know, I, at the last meeting we were at, there were a couple of questions of why don't we just do what, what Ray wants to do? And, well, if that's going to be the case, then I think we probably should get rid of the select board. Um, if, if we're not going to be able to.
I, I want to, I want to throw you back into the, uh, into the, into the, at least the motion and the, and the topic, and.
Well, I am, Mr., I am, Mr. Chairman. You don't have a right to interrupt me when I'm being very calm. I didn't fold my books up, and you asked for discussion about the bid.
I have a question for you, that, that you raised, and that is, can you explain to us how, how you believe it was not fair?
There was a minimum, uh, which I've been through at the previous meetings, there was a minimum, uh, weight spec and a maximum weight spec. When they do that, obviously, you're going to, um, the, the two main construction carriers in this world, John Deere and Caterpillar, um, weighing things and having their operations cost money. It's kind of like put yourself if you're going to buy a pickup truck. Um, you, you get what you pay for. Even in these particular bids right here, I, it's, I haven't looked that closely, but to be a hundred thousand dollars different and have the specs almost the same, should raise some eyebrows. I don't know whether the thickness of the steel is the same, I don't know whether the hydraulic pumps are the same, um, their representatives are saying they have a five-year warranty. I hope this unit, both these units last fifteen years. Um, but, so, if you're buying a pickup truck, you don't go down to the store and say, you know, I want one that's got, that fits this mold, because they make three different kinds, basically, a half ton, a three-quarter, and a, and a one-ton. So if you throw the spec out there on a person that's buying it, and you say, this is the GVW I want, obviously, the three-quarter ton and the half tons are not going to bid. I mean, the one tons. So I think that that's what's happened here a little bit, and, um, I'm not a stupid person. I mean, you, you guys voted four to one to do it. I mean, I know what the politics are about.
But Dave, I hear that, but I don't understand how that's not fair, uh, because you, you want the half ton, but, so why would the, why would the twenty-five hundred or the thirty-five hundred waste their time?
No, and that's what happened here, I think. Um, when, if, if they did, um, look at something, then they said, well, you know what, ours, we do have one of those, um, but it's going to be over that restriction, and then, so why throw out the bid of?
Was there a maximum weight limit on this? Ray?
The, the first paragraph said these are minimum specs, and a minimum spec was starting between twenty-eight and thirty-one thousand pounds.
Thirty-one eight, I read the cap.
Correct. So it's, the minimum is between twenty-eight and thirty-one eight, which is, they call that the three to thirteen and a fourteen ton.
But if you only sold a fifty, a fifty thousand pound machine, you could still.
You could still, Ray, you just have to say no, and then what your weight was, and we would have to choose if that's acceptable or not. I mean, if it was five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand pounds heavier, but it still had the same, pretty much the same footprint, I was looking more at the size, the overall size and dimensions of the machine.
Yeah.
And the reach and everything, um, so I, I wouldn't get into the situation where it takes up the whole road.
Right.
But, but, but listening to what was just said, obviously, you know, fifty thousand or whatever the number is, costs money to build.
Yes.
I mean, so, so the bid is futile. The bid would have been four hundred thousand, and given the fact, I don't see this board, even though the day of my father's board decided to pick the highest priced thing, that doesn't make any sense on the, on the bid process. When you throw stuff out, you say, okay, the primary thing is a low bid, the lowest bid.
With me, the primary thing, you know, I could, I could have said, uh, ten to twelve thousand pound machine, and barely reached into the back of the dump trucks, and had it been a lot smaller and a lot cheaper, but I chose the middle ground. I was trying to be like the happy medium. Um, I know that a neighboring town bought a, a really big machine, and yes, it digs faster, it carries more, more material, but every time a car comes, they're going to have to pick up and move and get out of the way for the car to go by and then go back, so you kind of lose your efficiencies. Um, I had to pick a target, and the target I picked was that list, so it was really clear to make sure that they knew that that was the minimum spec. I really didn't want anything smaller. Um, we could have looked at things bigger, but then it came down, like you said, to cost and overall size. Like, you know, even if it came out the same price, but the thing took up the entire road, or it's really heavy or really big, we would really have to seriously think about that and outweigh, have that conversation about efficiencies and size and how big, you know, is it going to fit in the building? Is it, you know, can we keep it undercover, is it going to be stored outside, type of stuff?
And this is a conversation we did have, I think, um, prior to the last vote of the board.
Ray, have, has, have you checked with any of the references, uh, that they?
I've talked to different towns that own this equipment, and they've all appeared to be very happy with it.
But have worked with this company?
Yes. It, that's the only vendor in the region. Like Milton Katz, the only cat vendor in this whole region. And then, um, this other company that bid is, is a surprise to me. They actually bid a Le Bear, Le Bear, which is what Dwight has. Um, they're very good, reputable machines. One thing I, I'm a little leery of is it doesn't have depth, which is actually good, but the reason they don't have depth is they run at higher IPMs, and they're air-cooled, they're not liquid-cooled. So I'm a little nervous about that. I don't know much about the machine from the research I did, they seem solid, but it's a hundred and three thousand dollars more. So apples to apples, you know, the, the gauge of the steel, everything like that, is a, is a standard that's set nationally. Um, it's not.
And, and if you had have done what you said before, which was to set your, your minimum at twelve thousand pounds, about, the only thing that really would have done was provided more paperwork to go through insofar as?
I, I, we could have lowered the cost even more and paid, you know, one fifty, one sixty, but then I would have had a machine that I don't know if it would reach in the back of a ten-wheeler, or it would have, you know, been a really small machine.
But you'd be standing there saying, that's not what I want.
Correct. I, I picked, same, like, the good reference is, is a truck, you know, a town truck. Um, when we bought that one ton, we got a fourteen thousand pound truck, I was trying to get a twenty-three thousand pound truck. We settled on a nineteen, but those weren't available, so we got a fourteen. I mean, my wish would have been the twenty-three thousand pound CV or the Ford six hundred with the wing and the hydraulics, so I could have, but it, it didn't work. I mean, it's twenty thousand dollars less to buy the truck we got, and we got what we got. It, it, there's a lot of constraints, like salt shed. Gold standard is, yeah, I'd love it to have everything, but I know to be responsible, you have to compromise. I won't, I won't compromise on like the outside things, that eliminates why you're building a new salt shed. You're trying to, well, one, be safe, but the other is, I really care about water quality. You know, when I'm dead and gone, I don't want people saying, you know, Ray ruined the freaking water in my house because he put salt on the ground type thing. That's my thought.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion, uh, specific to the motion on the floor?
I just want to make a comment that here it says the bid's only good for ten days, and we're past the ten days.
That's a standard, that's a standard comment.
Says this proposal is valid for ten days after the listed date, which is April tenth.
We, we opened the bids, um, last week, so it's from the time you opened the bid, technically.
I'm just telling you what it says.
No, I, I understand. I, I don't think there'll be any issue with that.
I don't think the buyer represents the seller.
I guess I, I wouldn't mind asking Dave if that's okay, uh, what part of the process would you have changed to actually address the, the concern that you brought, which is wondering, right, right? My understanding is that you're wondering if something was restricting the number of bidders.
Yeah, I think I would have opened the door wider. I would have said, what do you have? Let's take a demo, let's consider some other things potentially, let's lease for a year. I know for a fact that somebody bought a Caterpillar at Town, and, and four or five of the guys couldn't run it, fifty hours, they turned it back in. Um, my brother drove a cat three fourteen for gurney for twelve years, and the wheeled ones are not the same as the tracks. Um, so I, I guess, um, the weight things and all of this other stuff, um, there's a lesson for me, and I, I, I guess I just wouldn't have gotten that specific. I would have said, um, let me see what you got, and go, including whoever wanted to do it, whether it was Nate McNaughton Machinery or, or whatever.
Any further discussion?
Carry on, there's a motion on the floor to accept the bid for Wood CRW Corporation, uh, for the wheeled excavator with a five-year warranty, uh, seven-year warranty and five-year service plan. Um, this includes a twenty-seven thousand dollar trade-in offer and the finance, um, uh, decisions to be made in the future. Is that correct?
At the next, at the next meeting.
At the next, at the next meeting. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Any extensions? Kelly, did you vote? Did I hear you?
No, you didn't hear me.
So is that, is that an extension, or is that a?
Extension, yeah.
Okay. The motion carries three to one to one. There's three in favor of the motion, one extension, and one opposed. The motion carries. Uh, town manager update? Uh, Town Manager update.
I just have a couple of things tonight. We moved a couple of meetings around last week that we had scheduled. Obviously, we weren't going to hold our emergency management meeting because we had an issue surface with the Escutney Fire Chief. So we did reschedule that. Excuse me. We did reschedule that emergency management meeting to the 24th at 6:30. It'll still be at the schoolhouse. We also rescheduled the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, and that's been rescheduled to May 6th at 6:00 PM.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Just a quick reminder that the Escutney Basin Bridge Project bids are due on April 30th at 11:00 AM, and the bid review will take place on five, at the 5:13 Select Board meeting. So the next Select Board meeting will be reviewing those, those bids for the Escutney Basin Bridge.
Who's doing any of the work with that? Regional planning or no?
The Escutney Basin Bridge Project? Uh, that's, that's us internally, and Todd Hittinger is the engineer.
You kept him to do it, to complete? I know he did a little preliminary work, but you, you're keeping him to do the whole, from start to finish?
Yes.
I didn't know.
Yep. Bike and pedestrian grant. We did receive notification that we have been awarded the bike and pedestrian grant. So the next step is we'll advertise an invitation for bids. And once those bids come back, we'll review that with the board and the awarded grant and decide whether we're going to move forward with the project or not. Water District updates. We just received a grant for 50,000 to develop an asset management plan for the Water District. So the plan will include asset inventory and condition assessment, mapping assess, assets, analyzing lifecycle costs, risk assessment, and funding strategies. I don't know if the full board was aware of the issue that we had with PFAS in the Water District. So we did have to send out a notice to everyone. We applied for funding to develop an alternative analysis report for PFAS. Basically, what that will do is review operational changes, potential source replacement, potential water system consolidation, potential treatment options, and so forth. We haven't received notice if we're getting the grant or not, but we expect one soon.
Am I correct in understanding that there's just the one Water District here in Escutney?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And it serves a little over 200 homes. Yep. It's a small system. Plus a school, town office, library.
Yeah.
Church. Now, we're going through a website migration process, so Drupal 7 is reaching its, at the end of its useful life. In 2025, this isn't of any cost to us. We're already on an annual, uh, we have an annual contract with Civic Plus. We're just going to be going through that migration process. So you might see some changes over the next couple of months. But they believe it should be seamless, we hope, so. And then the last thing is, we sent out the notices to everyone that the board awarded ARPA funds to, and they're going to be developing their proposals and coming back to give those proposals to the board.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go.
So, will ARPA be on the agenda for the next meeting?
It can be.
So, do, not tonight, but, so there was a, a total that was left over after that meeting, right?
Yes.
Then I would, um, I would, even, I'm on the short end of the vote that I just took last. I would like you guys to entertain the thought of perhaps coming up with some of the money that just got spent on the, the excavator, potentially. Because I saw you earmark like 100,000 for Martin Hall, and I think that's a little strong. So maybe, I'd, I'd just throw that idea out there, I'm not sure. I mean, we bought one or two police cruisers entirely with that money. I think we bought other things before, so, I don't know, it might be a good idea to talk about.
I was thinking that, dude.
So I can add a finance option that includes ARPA funding as well?
You said you were going to talk to Steve and then, right? You're going to get whatever options together. Maybe it's a choice that we should look at.
I'd just put ARPA on it. I wouldn't include ARPA in that little part. Let us decide what we want to put towards it.
Can you say that again?
Let us decide how much ARPA money to put towards purchase of the excavator. Don't, not for him to include a amount in the, in the packet that he's going to present to us from, then when he gets together with Steve. I want to see what the difference is.
Okay.
Yep, if any. I don't know, I just threw that out there, I don't know. I don't know.
I just want to know if it's gonna, if it's worth it to spend the money on ARPA.
I agree, and I understand where you're coming from, but it might, some of that might depend on which avenue they, they, they're presenting. So there may be several different, which is why you want to have the decision here. I, I get it.
I want to make the choice, yeah.
Yeah, I get it. But, but you're, you might demonstrate several options of totals from ARPA. Whether you're doing the, 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 what was it, a three-year, um, finance at 0%, right? There's that option. You know, what does that look like? There's other options, so there might be different levels at different options. And that's what I'm saying. But she wants us to, to decide.
I've got one more question. So, is it under Town Manager report still?
Yeah.
So, when you're doing that, though, when you make a three-year loan, the, the payment is pretty strong. It's going to be $50,000 a year, even if it's zero. Man, I like that. So, um, can you also give us the, whatever the debt schedule that we have?
Yes.
I mean, what, what really bothers me is the future. And so, but if we had a long fall off, it might make more sense, as a matter of fact, to pay two more rentals or maybe one more on the grader. It might make a different choice, a better choice, to fit the debt schedule.
Yes. Absolutely.
When we're coming to make this other choice, we want to know what... Zero might not make any sense, I'm not sure. I don't know.
Can ARPA funds be used for an existing expense?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we did their revenue replacement option when we filed our last ARPA report, which freed up all the money.
And, just so you know, that we also double-paid the grader lease bill once with ARPA funds.
Yep.
I think, what is it, 17 or something more thousand? I don't know what it is.
It was with FundVal, it's not, not ARPA, but...
We didn't use any ARPA to do that?
No. We didn't, we didn't end up...
Did it with FundValz.
Okay. Didn't we pay too?
Yeah, in one year.
Yep. But I'm, I thought the question more was, what can we use ARPA for? We can prepay a loan.
Okay. That was my, yeah. In the school world, you can't pay for something you've already committed for with most grants. That's why I was trying to understand.
They did allow that. In fact, they liked that idea, to have a combination. Yes.
That makes sense.
They didn't want us to create ongoing expenses, like hiring employees or stuff like that.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the Town Manager's report? Okay. Future agenda items. We have a list here. It's growing. Anything else on that for future agenda items? Do you, you got the ARPA in there?
Yeah, we have the, the financing for the excavator. And there's backup in the packet to some of these future agenda items.
Okay.
To review.
Okay. Appointments, are there any here? There's, we have Board of Listers, Budget Committee, four vacancies, two of the listers, Conservation Commission, one, Energy Coordinator, one, Health Officer, one, Praxor Rec, two, Veterans Memorial, two, and Zoning Board of Adjustment, one. But there are no names in, so anybody interested in any of those positions, send a request into the office to the attention of the Town Manager. Approve the warrant. Do I hear a motion for the warrants?
Could I ask a question really?
Yes.
Of appointments?
Yeah.
Are any other towns, do they have any strategies for getting volunteers to fill these vacant positions that are working?
Pizza.
I don't mean, I'm thrilled, like, you know, it seems like a lot to me. And I just wonder if other towns have some successful strategies to, to kind of get people to jump in.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's happening all around us. We have a shortage of volunteers. This list is actually, it's a little lighter.
I don't know why we have two vacancies for Board of Listers. I know Mr. Fuller got at least, at least a couple votes.
I think I got a few, I did.
I think he had six in my pile.
What do you, what do you actually get, though? Do you actually, what, is there a threshold? I don't know, I have to flow in. Is there a threshold? The winner, do I get a chicken dinner?
You might be a lister, dude.
I know. That's what I'm asking. Are you going to go get a screen?
Do you have to have so many votes to be, is it 25 or something like that?
That was my question.
There is a threshold percentage. Going back to your question, Nate, I think social media is a good option to let everyone know that these vacancies exist, and then fax emails and so forth, which I, we did do. But maybe we do another round of those, see if we get any interest.
Well, maybe include some explanation of what actually does this job require. I mean, I certainly would have never...
Another, another option, like, I, I talked to Brandon and brainstormed him some names for the Budget Committee. Uh, just, and I'm trying to just think of people that I know that are finance-oriented, that would come in and understand something about the papers we put in front of them.
Well, I know when you're looking for donors, the most effective thing is to ask people.
Yeah.
You know, ask specific people, would you do this?
Yeah. So, you know, yeah, so, social media, but there's also your connections, your friend connections, you know, anybody you know.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, so can I just go back for a step? Because I think we could save a lot of time here. See the one where it says, I didn't even know until I started looking, what's we got in our packet? This Meadow Lane thing? Can, can, can Brandon just tell those people that, that sounds like an old Bow Road thing and which we don't need, really? They, they, there's a process for Meadow Lane to do what they want to do before it even gets to us. So they want to take over the section of Meadow Lane or something or whatever. So, um, any kind of thing like that is like a road, you know, they want it to be a class three. Well, they got to have a hearing, we got to do else, but... So turn that over to, I don't think that's land use. Isn't there like a highway policy about how roads go up or down? And they, they get, they get a copy of that and say, "They have to do the work." And then we just like go have a site visit and...
That's correct.
So, so, but it says here, future agenda item, first Meadow Lane. It just sounds like that, the same old Bow Road thing again.
Dave, thanks for going back to that, I appreciate that, because we do, I think he's right. I think, I think if, if that's what they want, they, there is a policy and a process.
Yes.
Just follow it.
Follow it.
And, and we're here.
And Ray is part of that, because he'll go inspect the road, and then we'll have a, our board will have a site visit.
Yep.
Just like basic route road and just like...
Or zoning and planning issue.
Or actually go walk on the road.
Yes, it's anything like that. It's, it's a process. So if they're requesting that, then, you know, they just need to look at the policy and, and you two and...
That doesn't need to come for us. Right. Not yet.
Yeah. Probably, our next notice is probably to do a site visit. That they're in process, right?
Well, no, they'll have to have certified mail to every boarder. They'll have to make sure Ray...
I mean, for us, our, for us, basically, it's just the notification that we've got to do a site visit. That would be our next for us, but that's, they've got other steps first.
Which would be a public hearing.
Yes.
Site examination.
Sure.
Which isn't going to happen until, I don't even know when.
Yeah, they have to file the paperwork for the hearing, which is a part of that policy.
July or August or like...
September, October.
So Kelly shared this with me, a vacancy...
Because Olivia left it for us.
I see.
We all had one on our table here one day. And I picked it up and I took it home, and then I brought it back thinking, well, it's been a couple of weeks or three weeks, and I said, "Well, maybe we need to..." Because I don't want people to think that we're not remembering, and that's where that came from. But Ray said he thought that it had been settled, because he hadn't heard anything more from it, that the letter was dated after Ray had talked to the people, so...
That's the first I seen it, so I just put it in the packet.
Olivia.
You need to go do a site visit. Okay, so that takes care of Meadow Lane. Anything else? I know we moved backwards just with that, but that's okay. And, uh, so, we're okay, Randy? Approve the warrant? Motion to approve the warrants?
So moved. Yeah, Dave, I know, you stand and sit there and wait.
I haven't even scrolled down yet. So many pages in this packet from this wild...
General fund payroll, $17,050.51. Operating expenses, $34,038.25. Highway fund payroll, $9,560.98. Operating expenses, $23,581.11. Solid waste management payroll, $1,907.33. Operating expenses, $13,700, uh, $739.24. Library payroll, $2,366.29. Grants, $305.93. Fundraising, $157.05. Temporary bridge payment, $1,500. Reserves, $23,103.41. Total, $25,066.39. Grand totals payroll, $30,885.11. Operating expenses, $96,424.99.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion.
My job was way easier. I just said, "Yes."
I see that that money is back on the, was it back on here? Did you take it back off?
For the Town Clerk.
For that ninth, yeah.
Yeah, so basically what that was, was a project for COTS, and that's to digitize old land record volumes. The contract was signed back on, in October, October 5th. There was an initial payment of 11,000, and this is the final payment to complete that project, so...
I thought I saw it on here somewhere.
So it was income or expense?
It's an expense.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Hold on a second. Go ahead, you go ahead.
I, I was just, out, out of curiosity, I noticed that on April 17th, there was a, a legal bill about a Select Board election inquiry. I was just curious what that was.
What page?
Oh, God, I don't know.
On the, on the, on the general fund?
What date, did you say?
Um, April 17th. It was a bill for $803, and I, I just was curious what, what, um... It's not that I'm challenging it so much, I was just curious what it was.
So that was the question that was raised over the communications that existed for the chair position. And I responded to the board, I believe, and explained...
Where, where did you find that, Rika? So, I'm trying to find it.
Um, probably under S for...
So it's page five of six, Dave?
Oh, he even knows where it is.
Way up. Keep going, general fund, right?
Yeah.
And that's page 178 in the packet.
Yeah, like a lot, killed the 48 trees.
Sort of mid, right in the middle of the page.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Well, there's no trees, because back in 2020, you guys used to print the packets, so...
Okay, now here I'm going to have a friendly suggestion. My research was free, done by VLCT. So, please go to VLCT. You know, I mean, I, we use the Town Council, and I've had this talk before, like, when we got into it with the fire departments and everything. Lawyers, no. And they, they have that same information, you know, that, there's no money, so... It's a friendly suggestion.
I think it's further down the page. 419 Savage Open Meeting Law, VLCT. Does that have anything to do with that? I don't know why it would necessarily.
No, that's Olivia's course. She's the open meeting law enforcement officer.
But I, I, I didn't, I, I'm not registered with VLCT and I contacted... But I, I, I didn't, I, I, I'm not registered with VLCT, and I contacted VLCT.
So I got a question to ask. On pay, in the general fund, on the page one of six, which would be the very first page, halfway down the page, what is this, I probably should know, competent CCI managed services at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven?
So that is the IT, we break out IT for a department, except like to see the total cost of operating each department. So depending on how many computers you have within your department, you get charged.
We have eleven departments?
Yeah. Yeah, we do. We have.
Competitive computers, right?
Yeah.
That's the CCI.
Oh.
Yep.
I said, I probably should have known that.
Well, is it eleven department, or is it eleven computers?
No, you have admin, finance, town clerk, listers, land use, police, two fire departments.
Okay.
Highway, solid waste.
That adds up fast. Yeah.
That adds up quick.
And then each department has a different number of computers.
This is why we pay him the big bucks. We get nothing. Crumbs. We get crumbs.
That's the only question I had.
That's gonna change. We got thirty-one eighty an hour. I remembered that from, from that sitting.
Yeah, we gotta raise.
But only if you're working on, on mitigating.
Well, you'd be surprised how many hours are gonna run up.
Is, is, is there any further discussion on the motion? Everybody happy with all the numbers? Kelly, you all done now?
I'm all set, yeah.
Okay, no further discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion to approve the warrant signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries. It's unanimous. Any other business? Brendan, anything? Oh, we, we wanted to talk about, uh, the potential for a possible, um, uh, executive session as a special meeting, uh, and that has to do with the old Bow Road, I think, right?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm still sort of leaning towards just doing it quickly on five thirteen.
Okay.
I think, um, if possible. You know, we can hold a special meeting if everyone wants to do that.
This, this meeting would be with our, with the town attorney, so, uh, legal bill. Um, and he, Brendan talked to me about it today. Um, there's a lot going on over there. Um, probably can't really discuss it much more than that.
So it's got nothing to do with the town road? It's got, you know, like, remember we said?
It's got to do with everything, Dave.
It's, it's really.
It's complicated.
It's got to do with everything.
It really is.
Sounds like it's complicated.
It is. It, it is. I, I, I mean, I thought he was gonna shoot me through the, this guy was gonna shoot me through the phone.
What would it come under?
So. Um, legal, legal. It would come under legal. Three thirteen, uh, Title One, three thirteen, um, D, I think is legal.
What does everybody else think? I don't know that I'm into a special meeting, but it, can you, can you?
Well, look, I thought, he said the thirteenth would, that was, the thirteenth, he, when he talked to me, he, he was a little bit concerned about, um, the, the involvement of those out there and what's going on, and that we might need to do it ahead of time. But the thirteenth is a regular meeting.
I'm only talking about us. He, I think, I think Brandon has the ability to send an email to at least brief us on. I don't know nothing about it. And, and strictly put up the air, you know, we've done it before, confidential, don't reply.
That's the dissemination of material. It's, that's legal within open meeting law.
Yes, from him as a manager.
That's correct, to us.
So if you could save some time and energy, you could tell us like a little bit ahead so that we might have a little background rather than coming in cold.
And, and you can ask questions of the Town Manager in regards to, well, do we have this document? Do we have that doc? You know, anything that has to do with information, you can request, uh, and you can discuss.
You have all the documents, but I think this particular case, I think we need to have an executive session.
Okay.
I make a motion. Do we need to do that today?
No, 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 no. This is for the thirteenth. This is just kind of a, a heads-up of, of business coming, uh, that you know that we're gonna be, we're gonna need to go into an exec session.
I love you.
And he's thinking probably half an hour to forty-five minutes.
Wow.
That's why, that's why I started talking about a, a special meeting.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn for tonight.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Yep.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Yep.
Aye?